Welcome to East Hampton Village Board Meeting. Today is November 18th, 2022. If we could stand for a pledge which will be led by Superintendent Collins.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. So if you haven't seen the latest news, I appeared on CBS and we issued a proclamation and named a street after Ina Garten, who used to own the Barefoot Contessa on Newtown. She still owns the building and she's such an icon in our village and such a successful woman that it was our honor to do this for her. And the East Hampton Star actually did a very nice story about it. Thank you, Chris. Next on the list, I have the Herrick Park Restrooms. The renovation is starting today. They're starting the fencing. And hopefully, when is that? Approximately 60 days until that's completed. So that'll be a nice change for those bathrooms really needed some help. I'm going to ask Trustee Doyle to fill us in about all the holiday festivities.
Okay, well, thank you. So December 3rd, we are going to have our inaugural tree lighting at Hook Windmill. It is going to be around 4:30 and we will have carolers there and a guest of honor. And then we will light all the trees down the street. So this is going to be hopefully a great annual event, encourage people to come into the village. And we have a sponsor for this event. Prada is new in our town and village and they're really eager to be incorporated and involved with the village. So they want to sponsor the tree lighting, which would be great. And then that'll be, that morning will be the Christmas parade. I forgot to mention earlier in the day, the annual parade. And then the following week, December 10th, is going to be the Herrick Park. Mayor, you want to talk about this one? This is your favorite event.
Yes, this is my favorite event. So back in 1998 or '07, when I was in the village PBA, we did this event in Herrick Park. And basically, we have Santa will be arriving by helicopter, will be met by a police escort to take him to the movie theater where we will have a free movie for the first 255 people. It should be a lot of fun. We have great sponsors for this. So we have the sign posted in Herrick Park so if people can, you can see who's sponsoring this event. The village PBA is the main sponsor. So we thank them for doing this. And it should be a great time for all the kids and families that show up. So make sure you're there. It starts at noon on December 10th at Herrick Park.
And then the 18th and 19th, I believe, are the menorah lighting?
Yeah, so on the 18th, well, again, the Christmas tree lighting, for the first time ever, will take place at Hook Windmill on the 3rd. And then the menorah lighting will take place on the first night of Hanukkah, which will be sponsored by the East Hampton Havod. And that's at 3:30. And then the Jewish Center of the Hamptons is doing the second night of Hanukkah at the Hook Mill, which will be the 19th at 5:00 p.m. So hopefully, everybody can come out. We should have very festive holiday time. So I want to thank everybody for putting that together. I know it's a lot of work. And the chief of police is handling our parade this year. So if there are anything that's not done correctly, you know where to point the finger.
The music is going to be outstanding.
Yes. So I've asked him to make sure we have a lot of music in the parade, you know, holiday festive music. So hopefully, that all gets done. So we'll see. I wasn't too thrilled the other morning when I asked him how things were going. So he said he's got it all under control.
Swimmingly.
It's all good, as the chief would say. That brings me to, about the chief. The chief's going to be retiring next year. And whether people know it or not, the chief and I have served together for almost 40 years now. And it's time for a change, I would say. So, but we are going to, starting in January, we have some great images of the chief throughout his career. So we will pick out the best one each month at our monthly meeting and display it and probably embarrass him a lot. So that's our goal for nine months until he retires in September. Thanks for everything you've done, Mike, for real. All right, so next up, we have roll call. June?
Sure. Mayor Larson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Chris Minardi?
Here.
Trustee Sandra Melendez?
Here.
Trustee Sarah Ammonen?
Here.
Trustee Carrie Doyle?
Here.
Village Administrator Marcos Meladron?
Here.
And Lisa Prillo, village attorney?
Here.
Thank you. All right, first up for our presentations will be Hugh King, our village historian. I just want to apologize to everybody. We had internet difficulties, so this is not our normal filming format. So we're doing this the old-fashioned way. So again, it's not the greatest, but it's the best we could do on late notice. Welcome, Hugh.
Hi, Ina Garten. Do you know that Ina Garten has been at Home Sweet Home twice? She had a surprise birthday party for her husband Jeffrey at Home Sweet Home. And then maybe a month ago, I get a call and she's going to bring someone to Home Sweet Home. And you know who it was? Come Away With Me. Who sang that? Come on. Norah Jones. And they came to Home Sweet Home. Okay. You have done a wonderful job putting up all the names of the people who served in the wars up on Main Street. Well, the American Legion was formed on March 1st, 1920, at a meeting at Oddfellows Hall. All right? 60 ex-servicemen met to organize the Edwin C. Halsey Post, number 700 of the American Legion. Edward C. Halsey died in the service in France during World War I. And his brother, IY Halsey, was instrumental in starting the American Legion. And some of the first American Legion meetings were held in IY Halsey's garage. Where was Halsey's garage?
Stop and Shop.
Where Stop and Shop is right now. That's how old Dave Collins is. He remembered it, okay. And then the Veterans of Foreign Wars, VFW. Is this supposed to be right? That's echo, it's okay? All right. VFW Post 550 was named after Edward Everett Albert Herter, who had signed up with the French Army and was killed in 1918 in Paris, France, only months before the armistice. The first installation of offices was held on March 25th, 1939, at the East Hampton High School Auditorium. All right? Now, let me talk about a couple of veterans. Joshua Penny, you ever hear of him? Of course not. He was involved in the War of 1812. One of the causes of the War of 1812 was the imprisonment of sailors. The British Navy would take sailors off of American boats and put them into the British Navy, which was an awful place to be. He escaped. He spent 13 months in South Africa without seeing another human being. He worked his way back to Southhold, where he was born. And then he comes to East Hampton because he married Molly Gann. Where did she live? Gann Road in Springs. That's where it gets its name. Her father was John Gann. He was involved in the War of 1812. He is so mad at the British that when the British fleet is in Gardner's Bay, he hooks up with this plan to get a torpedo boat and drive into the ships and blow them up. But it didn't work and he's sitting home in his house at Three Mile Harbor. He's picked up in his night clothes, thrown into prison. And he finally was released and he lived out his life in Three Mile Harbor. That's Joshua Penny. And then the other one is Captain Jonathan Dayton, John Dayton. The British were out up at Montauk Point and they were ready to make landfall to get the cattle and sheep and horses that were down there. Jonathan Dayton went down there with his men and they were up on top of a hill. They marched down the hill, they changed their clothes around, marched back up at the hill again, down again, changed their clothes again, did this several times. And the British thought there were more soldiers there than there really were and they sailed off. Okay? That's it.
Thank you very much, Hugh. Next up is a presentation about Town Pond algae, but I'd like our village planner just to speak a little bit about it and introduce the speaker.
Yeah.
I said Town Pond.
So, good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. The Town Pond project has been ongoing since I've started at the village eight years ago. Initially, it was to clean out the material that had accumulated in the pond. Since that work had been completed, we've noticed some growth, algae growth, which has occurred on the surface of the pond. We, in the interim of noticing the algae growth, the village had retained PW Grocer to do a hydrological analysis of the pond to figure out the water inputs, how much water is being lost, and to come up with a long-term management plan to help us regulate the pond. And in the interim, obviously, in the interim, we've had this algae growth. We reached back out to PW Grocer. Chris Armslog is here to present a proposal to clean out the algae that's occurring there. And that's, I guess that's, in a nutshell.
Perfect. Thank you. Yep. Thanks, Chris.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Chris Armsgog. I'm a professional geologist with PW Grocer Consulting, or an engineering, environmental engineering firm located in Bohemia. And yes, we're working on the hydrological analysis of the pond. We should have something to the village in the next few weeks, looking at the inputs and outputs and what could be recommended to kind of stabilize the water levels. The village asked me to take a look at the weeds and the growth that's occurring in the pond. I stopped by yesterday, took some samples, evaluated what I saw. It looks as if probably about 56% of the pond has an invasive weed called milfoil that's kind of growing in the pond. What is appearing on the surface does appear to be algae, you know, algae appearance. It is related to the milfoil. It could be green algae. There were some concerns that it was blue-green algae or harmful algae bloom. There are no indications that what is being seen fits the description of the harmful algae blooms. I know Billy's been in contact with New York State DEC, but I am not seeing any indication of the harmful algae bloom in Town Pond right now. Based on what I saw and my experience, we do some work for Town of Brookhaven, Suffolk County, Suffolk County as well, and some other ponds, namely Lower Lake and Upper Lake in Yappank, Canaan Lake in Patchogue, and a few other ponds in Nassau County as well, where we're dealing with invasive weeds. I put a quick proposal together to do some quick maintenance on the pond to remove some of those weeds that are growing. Again, these are invasive weeds that aren't native to the area. They come in, they take over, and they start to choke out the area. The proposal that I presented is for a few people to go and physically rake and hand remove a lot of the weeds. That'll keep them away for a short time. The roots are still in place. In order to deal with the roots, and so you can kind of control it over long term, we'll have to work with the village and DEC to come up with a longer management plan, which could include either something like putting an herbicide in the pond or something called bentic mats, where you put those down on the bottom of the pond and they choke out sunlight. And those weeds then will grow, die over time that way. So again, are there any questions about what people are seeing that I might be able to answer at this time?
Do these weeds grow on the east side of the pond or are they just all on the bottom of the pond?
We're seeing, in my stop by yesterday, seeing a good portion in the northeast corner. I think that's a portion that hadn't been dredged because there were some limitations that DEC gave regarding dredging. So the highest percentage is in that northeast corner where the weeds are. And then I'm seeing a majority of the rest being along the eastern shoreline. Some do pop over towards the west as well. And again, it's my understanding that pond is generally two to three feet deep throughout most of the pond, sandy bottom, with the exception of that northeast corner. That's a soft sediment that wasn't removed when the dredging was done.
How soon can your crew do the work?
We're hoping to kind of mobilize sometime next week. There could be weekend work. We anticipate three to four days of activity out there with a, you know, four-person crew kind of pulling things out of the water.
Great. Any other questions?
How long would that stave off the algae from growing back?
You'll probably see some of it, not algae, you'll probably see some of the weeds grow back next spring because again, we're not able to get the roots with this. It's really a physical harvesting of what's been, you know, a few inches above the surface, cutting those down and pulling those out. So you will see some areas start to propagate back up next spring, next summer. It shouldn't be as dense for possibly a year or two. During that time, I would strongly recommend working with DEC to figure out a longer-term, more definite strategy. Again, this is a temporary maintenance, maintenance strategy. Unfortunately, once these invasive weeds like milfoil or cambudaroo, you know, get in, it's, you weigh what is, what makes sense as far as maintenance versus a long-term permanent solution.
Anyone else? All right. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much for the last minute.
My pleasure.
Marcos, will you introduce the next speaker?
Mr. Duda. Good morning, everyone. I'm Joe Duda of Duda Actuarial Consulting. It's a pleasure to be here this morning to present the latest GASB 75 Actuarial Evaluation Report of the retiree health care that you offer to your retirees. We do this valuation once every two years. I think I was here during the pandemic. I guess it was 2020. Just can't believe how fast two years have gone. But I have some good bit of news for a change, okay? The liability has finally come down. So it's, I was very happy to see that. I'm going to go through the report very briefly. Oops, thank you. And, you know, just go over some of the, I assume everybody has a copy of this, the actuarial evaluation report. Now, we do the valuation as of August 1st, 2021. And then what we do for the auditor, your auditors are over at Village Hall doing their audit for the fiscal year ending July 31st, 2022. We take the data from 8/1/2001 and we project it to the end of the year. So the report that I'm going to go through right now, you know, at least the top half of it, are calculations as of 8/1/2021. So if you go to the first page after the letter, you'll see an Excel cost sheet that's entitled Actuarially Determined Contribution Village of East Hampton OPEB Plan. As you can see, these calculations were as of August 1st, 2021. We had 83 actives who have a right to a future benefit under the plan. And we have currently 51 benefit recipients. So a total amount of participants of 134. But if you look at the bottom of the page, you'll see your OPEB liability, that stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits, is at 25.7 million. And it has been growing over the past several years because what happens is, we look at a 20-year municipal bond index, a double-A bond index, and interest rates have been falling quite a bit over, well, not recently, but, you know, the recent past, it has been falling. So your liability has increased to 25 million, okay? And what we're saying here is if you were to fund the benefit, the actuarially determined contribution, which is up at the top, is $1,641,376. So if you divide that by covered payroll, it comes out to about 17.42%. Now, under New York State law, you're not allowed to fund it. You're not allowed to set up a trust. It's not like a pension plan. But this is information for the auditor. The auditor needs this stuff, okay? But that codifies how much this plan costs, okay? So, you know, whether you're bargaining contracts or doing whatever, you know, just keep in mind that this coverage for everybody is 17.42%. If you take a look at two pages beyond, you'll see the expected net payments in the future. And after co-pay, we're looking for 2021 at about $1 million. And it kind of remains somewhat level. It increases over the 15-year period to about 1.3 million. And then on the following page, these calculations, as I mentioned before about the interest rate, were done at 2.16%. So I'm looking at page two and you will see how the liability, now in a closed group, as people, and I hate to say this, die off, the retirees, you know, pass away and, you know, so your liability comes down. You have a lot of young people in the plan. So if we just look at the closed group and no new entrants, the liability would be expected to decrease by about 3 million, as you can see, from 25 million to 22 million. Over on page three and continuing on to page four, we have the eligibility requirements. And we do provide retiree health care for the retiree and the spouse. There is a co-pay, as you can see, as of June 17, 2016. Any PBA member hired after that date has to contribute 15% of the health premium paid by the village at retirement. Also on page four, the non-uniform, very similar, for non-contract employees or non-union employees hired after 1-1-2-2011, they have to contribute 15% as well, not to exceed 3% of gross salary. And the same also holds for elected officials after 1-1-17. So that's what we're valuing. We're valuing that benefit and we're telling you it's about 25 million for the group, okay? The assumptions start on page five. I'm not really going to get into it. We're using retirement rates, you know, for the police and firefighters and also for the non-uniform. This was taken from the New York State plan. So as they make changes, we will make changes as well. The mortality table is a very conservative table. We used a blue collar adjustment for the police, but as you can see, we projected the RP 2000 to 2021. Good news for today, everybody's living longer. I'm a fellow of the Society of Actuaries. My profession's been very anal about people, you know, living longer. We have to reflect it in the valuation because the benefit payments are for a longer period of time. Although I was always kind of like not sold on that because I always thought mortality was a nebulous assumption. And then look what happened. COVID-19 came around and you probably heard that life expectancy fell by a year, the last two years or so. I don't know how that's all going to factor in. We'll just have to see how the trends are as we go forward. Over on page seven, we just have a scatter, age service scatter for the actives. And we have some benefit scatters on pages eight and nine for the 83 actives and the 51 benefit recipients. We have six beneficiaries and 45 retirees. And right after that, I guess it's right after page nine, we have section seven, which is a very important exhibit. You'll see this in your financial statements for the village when the auditor completes their work this year. I finally brought good news to the village of East Hampton. And the good news is that your liability, if you take a look at the OPEB liability, it fell to 21.3 million. So it fell by about $4 million. And the reason being is that interest rates have increased. Remember I showed you that earlier exhibit where it was like 2.16%? Now it's up to 3.54, that same bond index, because interest rates have been increasing. This is the only time, you know, when you hear about interest rates increasing, it's always bad news, okay? It's mortgage rates are going up, the stock market's getting crushed, all this bad stuff that you see on TV. This is actually good news. It's an inverse relationship. So as the interest rate goes up, the village liability goes down, okay? That's just how it works, okay? Because what happens is, because you're assuming that, you know, the assets, if you were to have assets, would go up in value, so to provide the same benefit, it would be less of liability, less money. So it's inverse relationship. Since the valuation, I think interest rates are probably at four, at least 4% right now. So this was as of July 31st. So, you know, when you get your report for next year, I'm hoping that that 21 million decreases even more so. Like if you take a look at the middle of the page, you'll see, I have to give the auditor, well, what's the effect of a 1% change in the interest rate? So from 3.54 to 2.54, as you can see, goes up by about 3 million. Likewise, if it goes to 4.54, it goes down by about 3 point, or actually about 2.4, okay? So, you know, if the interest rate does go up, and it has gone up, you should benefit from that, okay? Likewise, medical inflation. Now, this may counter it somewhat, okay? Once we get the rates from NISHIP and we analyze and develop the claim rates. As you can see, we start off with 21,386,062, but a 1% increase takes it up about $1.1 million to 24.7 million. So, you know, I don't know if you got your renewals for this year, but rates have been going up. A lot of my clients may be double-digit, I don't know what happened here at the village. But we did have a period where the rate increases were like around 6%, 7%, maybe a little bit less, but now they seem to be going up again. So that may counter a little bit with the interest rate jump, but I was very happy to see this number come down, okay? It's about time I gave you a good report. It's been 15 years I've been doing this, giving you bad news every time I come here, right? So, anyway, but it is a pleasure serving the village and whatever. I tried, I apologize for talking very fast, but I know your time is very limited. This is a very quick actuarial presentation. You don't want me to tell you any more than what I told you, so. I could spend hours talking about this. Anyway, any questions, comments, concerns? I believe I started the audit, Marcos. Okay, so I haven't heard anything, which is good news.
Yes, it's great.
Okay, so we'll keep it that way. Anything? Questions? No, thanks, Joe. Thank you very much. Always a pleasure. Thank you.
All right, next up is a board discussion about two items. The first are the shrubs in Lot 2 parking lot at Main Beach. So at our work session, we had a discussion about this, whether we wanted to remove the non-native shrubs from blocking the view of the pond. So has the board all had a chance to go up there and look at it? And if so, what direction would you like to go? Anybody?
Have we received any correspondence in Village Hall?
None.
I would agree to take them off. I don't like the way they look.
Billy, any issues taking them out?
No, there's, I walked the area in question and there's a mixture of non-native, some of them are invasive actually plants in the area. There's a mixture of native plants and then there's some volunteers that have popped up. And I don't, there's no issue with removing non-native vegetation from the shoreline.
Okay. Dave, any issues on your end?
There are no issues on my end, Mayor.
Does everybody agree? We'll remove them?
Yes.
All right, let's remove them. All right, next was the James Lane stop signs. Has everybody had a chance to go up there? And again, this was brought up at our work session about removing the three stop signs at the intersection of Mil Road and James Lane and making Mil Road a one-way to, from James Lane to Route 27. Everybody look at it? Everybody agree? Chief, you brought it up. You're still good?
Pretty good.
Dave, you good?
Yes, sir.
All right, great. So what, let's get a, can I get a motion to move that to a public hearing?
Motion to proceed.
Second.
All in favor? All right, so we'll push that to a public hearing. And that brings us to our public hearing, June.
Okay, continued from the October public hearing for introductory number four, 2022. It's a proposed local law amending section 267-4A of the Vehicle and Traffic Code to alleviate traffic flow, parking, and line-of-sight issues on Dayton Lane, near Dayton Lane and Main Street intersection. And the change would be on both sides of Dayton Lane from the intersection of Main Street and Dayton Lane, 600 feet instead of 438 feet, in a westerly direction.
Did we receive any?
No.
Correspondence? Nothing. Does anybody want to speak about this? Public? Nobody? All right, can I get a motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hearing is closed. Okay, hearing is closed. Now we have public comment for anything in general. Is there anyone? Just give us your name for the record, please.
Gloria Frazee, 18 Shell Road. Happy to be in the village and happy you guys are really looking at Town Pond. It really is an iconic feature of, of our village. And I had a couple of questions and observations because we've been talking about a number of individual items around the Town Pond, but it really is an entire ecosystem. Like, we've been looking at, the gentleman who was here earlier spoke about doing a water study. I wonder when we'll have the information about that because it's not only the water milfoil, and is it in fact the highly invasive Eurasian water milfoil, or a lo, a more local native, still invasive, water milfoil? He mentioned algae, which is a whole different treatment and another thing that is totally impacting the pond itself. One of the things there is, you know, fertilizers, algal bloom, and a lot of properties right around there where the water flows down off of pesticide and herbicide lawns that then impact the pond. Not only do we have the water milfoil, we also have a lot of mugwort there, so how can we address that? At the same time, that is more on the eastern end of the pond, more where, where the, the water and swell are located. There was mention of staining and raking. What this does with the water milfoil is it breaks off pieces, and this fragmentation immediately produces new, new plants. It's like you chop off the head of a snake or something, and it just, you know, it just keeps growing back. So are we going to looking at doing this every single year? In addition to staining and raking, one of the methods is to actually suction. Use suction so you get the full plant. So you loosen it maybe manually, and then you use suction to get the full plant. So you have a longer period of time before it grows back because with this method, it's really just going to grow back really fast. You'd be looking at doing it every single year. And it doesn't mention how they're going to dispose of it. We want to make sure that they're disposing away from any other water body source. It needs to be dried out and then disposed of in, in yard waste because whatever piece of body that hits, it's going to grow. Yeah, looking at the full picture, connect, and how are, how are these plantings that we're looking at going to connect to the existing swell? Because we really have, it's not just one item at once. It really is, as I mentioned before, a whole ecosystem. Are we looking at the big picture, or are we just trying to like pick one thing at a time? And I am really happy you're all focused on this, but it is, there are a lot of moving parts here that will work better if we look at, take the time to look at the big picture, to have a beautiful, beautiful Town Pond. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next. If you'd just state your name for the...
You could, you could do this anonymously, as Vinnie at least knows, open state law.
Can you speak into the microphone?
My name is David Kans.
Could you speak into the microphone?
My name is David Kans. Can you hear me?
Oh, you're David. Nice to meet you.
I'm David. I'm sure you've seen me around.
I've read all your, all your works.
Oh, really? Great. I'm glad someone reads it. First, I, I want to congratulate the board in terms of the holiday celebrations. You know, they're doing a terrific job. The only thing I would, I would advise you is perhaps consider Kwanzaa as a celebration as well, because it is getting, it's gaining, gaining more and more popularity. So just take that into consideration. As far as the 25 mile per hour, I think that's a great, that's what they did in New York City. I would, though, keep the 20 mile per hour around school zones, rather than making every road 25 miles per hour. Just a thought. Why am, why am I here today? Basically, I've been a resident for over 20 years. I've been coming out here since 1978. And I have a number of concerns in terms of the leadership, lack of transparency, and public discourse, particularly lack of comparancy. My comments are based upon objective facts unless you guys can prove otherwise, or the administration. I understand, Jerry, you, you submitted over 20 FOIL requests, and you responded to everyone in a timely fashion. My request is pretty straightforward. The approved budget had 26 professional consultants in name only, all of them listed on page three of the July working session agenda. In reviewing them, I noticed there was no dollar amount expended or planned, no scope of work, no hourly rates with specific titles. I followed up in Ju, in July with a FOIL request. That's over four months ago. I haven't received anything so far. It would be nice to know. Of, of the 26 consultants, I noticed a, a number of them included relatives, dear friends, business associates, and even a mother-in-law. In addition, I seriously question their specific roles and what's, what makes them unique for these jobs. So all I'd like to see is the scope, the contract, and the fees, which, which I think every citizen is, is entitled to. What I've seen, I think we just have to be careful that, we have to make sure we build the village brand, not necessarily the Jerry brand. I, you know, I think it's critical that, that we sell village holistically, that the events evaluate our economic impact, the economic multiplier, that will drive and justify everything that the village does, particularly in the show of the season. The only other things I have is the Saunders contract for, for Web. There is, while they set up, while there's Wi-Fi at Main Beach, what about the other beaches that was in the contract? It hasn't been anything done. Is it because they believe the volume isn't there, so they can't get enough people on, on their newsletter? But, but that was in the contract. As a matter of fact, even, even putting in the village was in the contract. Tesla Stadium, Electrify America was supposed to be putting charging stations there, and they would give us $9,600 a year to begin to chip away at the million-dollar purchase of the land. They're not there yet, and I'd be curious what happened to that contract. It was signed and delivered. And that's all, really, all I have today. But thank you for indulging me. I, I look forward to hearing your response, and I'll be back. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move into our resolutions.
Resolution number 273, approve claim vouchers for the month of October.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried.
Resolution 274, approve warrants as listed.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
275, approve budget transfer schedule number one, reference number one, dated November 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
Number 276, approve minutes for meetings held on October 6th and October 21.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
277, approve departmental reports.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
Number 278, approve $1,943,667 payment constituting the village's retirement system contribution for the fiscal year 2023 to 2020, 2022 to 2023, sorry, and $700,836 police fire department retirement system.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
279, approve employment of Kevin D. Gillian as per diem employee with the village's E M T B program at an hourly rate of $25, effective retroactive from October 25th, 2022.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
Number 280, approve employment of Michael D. Nelson as an hourly employee with the village's E M T B program at an hourly rate of $25, effective November 18th, 2022, pending completion of background check.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
Number 281, accept resignation of William Hamilton as a part-time paramedic with the village of East Hampton, effective October 21st, 2022.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
Number 282, approve waging increase for Ivan Jacob as custodian to the annual salary of $55,000, effective December 1st, 2022.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Passed and carried.
283, approve employment of Tyler Pond as custodian at the annual starting salary of $55,000, effective December 1st, 2022.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
Number 284, approved $1 hourly wage increase at the hourly rate of $20 for part-time lifeguard Matt Norquand, retroactive to August 16th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
Resolution number 255, deemed surplus and of no value the 2017 Ford F-250 flatbed dump truck and authorized auctions international to list online for disposal.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
Number 286, accept bid for glass bead turnout gear for fire department from High Tech Fire and Safety for $1,902.85.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
287, accept $81,081.37 proposal submitted by Lincoln I T for the purchase of two computer servers, two Aruba switches, and two Synology backup solutions for the police department.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
Number 288, approve $10,850 disposal fee for the AFF Fighting Foam from Clean Harbors as prepared by Arcadis.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
289, approve $9,427 purchase for 265 gallons of BioX Eco-Pal AA replacement foam for the fire trucks from municipal emergency services.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
290, approve the installation of a 30-foot aluminum flag pole by Lennon Flags at Two Mile Hollow Beach.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
291, approve building permit refund for the proposed building project at 45 Highway Behind the Pond for $12,800.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
292, approve the village eye and dental plan through Mariflex, effective January 1st, 2023.
So moved.
All in favor? Passed and carried. I wanted to thank the village administrator for hard work on this. We were able to increase the benefits for our employees because of this company that Marcos found. And not only will it increase the benefits, but it'll roll your benefits over from year to year. So you'll have a nice dental eye program that will last you for a long time. So, thank you, Marcos. That's very good.
293, notice for public hearing to be held December 16th, 2022, at 11:00 a.m. at the Emergency Services Building, 1 Cedar Street, for introductory number five, 2022, a proposed local law amending language for playing courts.
So moved.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
294, notice for public hearing to be held on December 16th, 2022, at 11:00 a.m. at the Emergency Services Building, 1 Cedar Street, for introductory number six, 2022, a proposed local law amending 25 mile an hour speed limit on all village roads.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried.
295, adopt local law number seven, I'm sorry, adopt as a local law number seven, introductory number four, amending section 267-4A9 to alleviate traffic flow, parking, and line-of-sight issues on Dayton Lane, near Dayton Lane and Main Street intersection.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried. We had that walk-on resolution. Do you want to, yeah, so we'll make a resolution to employ PWGC for the amount of $16,500 to do the work at Town Pond, per his agreement that you all received in your packet. You get a motion for that?
Motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor? Passed and carried. I think that concludes everything on the agenda, Jim? Great. So I just need a motion. We're going to go to executive session to talk about real estate and personnel, and we're going to close this meeting. Should we have to return, we'll contact you, the press, and let you know. So can I get a motion to close and go to executive session? Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor? All right, meeting is over. Thank you.